All right. Should we call the meeting to order? Is everybody ready?
Good.
Okay. All right. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. According to my iPhone, I'm at 6:04. According to the read clock, it's a little different. But we'll sign in at 6:04. Can we stand up and do the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you just park it? Just pop this down.
It's great.
Perry comes every day.
All right. Welcome, everyone. This is our first school board of the school year. So it feels exciting and great to have everyone here. We've talked a little bit about public comment. So just for the record, the way we're going to structure public comment is we're going to do 10 minutes at the top of the meeting for maybe if we could, you know, show a preference for people that maybe have to leave. And then we'll do 20 minutes towards the end of the meeting just because a lot of times what we're talking about may be something that lends itself towards public comment. Also, just for the record, you know, public comment is comments that come to the board. It's not a conversation. It's also not something we might necessarily respond to immediately. If it's something that perhaps Kate answers or something I answer or another board member, it's nice if we have a little bit of time to make sure we have the right information. So just wanted to have that on the record. And we also do have a sign-in sheet here. We're going to start doing a sign-in sheet. And that's just for if you're interested in doing public comment. All right. So I'm going to start the timer for 10 minutes. Would anybody like public comment? And when you make a public comment, just name an address. Thank you.
Sure. Can I? I'm much taller than this. No. Sorry. Okay.
Jack.
Right. My name is Brandon Micho. I live at 55 Wannecote Road in Stratum. I just was hoping to hear on either the superintendent's report or the principal's report, an update on busing. This year, busing again for the second time has been a little bit of a nightmare. And no, it's fine. And I understand that there's a lot of different circumstances that go into that. So when I talk to both offices, everyone's assured me to wait and be patient, things like that. So I'm hoping to get an update on that. Did we ever get the additional bus driver? Is that happening? What's the plan for that? Because right now, I mean, that first day of school, my son was home. It was after 5 o'clock. Recently, it's been better. The average is 4:15. So which is fine right now in the fall. But in about two months, he's going to be coming home in the dark, which is, I mean, for the second year in a row, I feel like this is, I'm a little disappointed that we couldn't have been more proactive about this and not necessarily reactive. If this is something that we knew and that could potentially have happened again, why can't we have things in place to sort of help these kids finish the end of their school day and be able to get on a bus and then get home? I mean, as it is right now, when if my son starts some of the after-school programs that are done it for, I will be able to pick him up and get him home before his bus even arrives, which seems a little backwards. So if the problem is that we, at the elementary level, rely on the middle school, which then relies on the high school, I don't know why we can't come up with a solution if it needs to start at the high school. And I'm happy to go to a cooperative board meeting to suggest whatever or work with whomever. Why can't we make sure those buses get out earlier to get to the middle school to then get to the elementary school? It seems like it's always the late buses that, by late numbered buses, I mean, that are being affected by this. Last year, it was the same, 30, 31, et cetera. It's happening again this year. Why can't we reverse that maybe from year to year and have it be the beginning buses next year? And the late buses are the ones that don't rely on them? Or if we do have buses that are waterfalling all three different schools, I feel like can we rearrange things so that there's a one waterfall from the high school to the middle school and then a separate one from the middle school to the elementary? I feel like there are a lot of different ideas that we can have and conversations that we could have had over the summer to maybe get these things sort of situated and taken care of before then. But now that we're sort of in it, I mean, I do appreciate some of the communications that have gone home about the different buses that are affected. And I do notice that we're going to have the extension on the after-school programs. Why can't we offer these kids a chance to sign up for these programs at a discount? Why can't we get these kids into multiple different things to make sure they have something to do? Because one of the biggest things I heard last year is that these students don't really have any structure. Running around the playground didn't work. So it became watching educational TV or small-time coloring groups. Giving these kids something to do might take their mind off and make them better bus riders on the way home or getting picked up from their parents. And then... Yeah. And that's pretty much it. Oh, and one of the things that's, it seems like it's a disproportionate effect based on these students for where they live and also for where they get picked up. One other solution could be for all the bus routes, not necessarily these ones. Have we considered reworking with First Student to rearrange these bus routes every year? So that way, the first student who's picked up is usually the last person that's dropped off. Why can't we reverse or come up with new routes the following years to make this sort of happen in reverse? So maybe that student who was always the last bus rider or being on this bus the longest, the following year, that pickup is earlier to make sure that they're not on the bus the longest, especially when they have to wait. I think yesterday, the bus 30 and 31 didn't even leave school until 3:50 or 3:55, which is 15 minutes after school at the end of the school day. Which is a long time to ask anyone from kindergarten through 5th grade to just sort of hang around or wait while their kids, their friends all go home and do other things. Oh, the other thing that I wanted to mention as a suggestion, if we do rely on these buses, water falling down from the different high school to the middle school, et cetera, if we know that bus 31, for example, is already going to be late when the high school gets let out at whatever time that is, how can we make sure that these, can we try to get these communications out earlier? Maybe open up pickup patrol? Because I was waiting for my son at 3:45, which was when he was getting home last year. I could have driven to the school two miles away, picked him up before 3:50 and his bus got, he got picked up from school. But I can't do that without, you know, the pickup patrol thing. Like, can we extend that window if we know from the high school to middle school that we're already going to be late? So that is my public comment.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you so much. And actually, it's on my list to bring up, too. My kid's on bus 30. And it is rough. So yeah, I do think that's something we can talk about maybe for next month.
Yeah. I mean, there's, we have made some changes just to like what they're doing in the afternoons. Last year, they were having extra recess and then that became really unstructured and the kids were elevated getting on the bus. So we implemented either, to Brandon's point, like a video or coloring and reading in a separate room just so they had quiet space. And that felt really structured and it was inside. And that didn't feel good either. So this year, we've implemented Monday meetings for buses, the later buses, where they sit down and kind of set a goal for the week, review how last week went, triage any bus seating issues, just kind of be proactive and get ahead of the week. Then they set a goal for the week. At that Monday meeting, they also choose from four structured activities. So they can do the chill zone, which is what it sounds like. There's a spot outside where students can kind of hang out, relax, talk, draw. There's an indoor option, and it's usually art-based. And then there's a walking club around the field. And then there's structure play, which is on the structure there. And kids choose where they want to go. It splits up pretty evenly in a way that it feels pretty good. Oh, there's also a structured game where we have one of our behavior interventionists running a structured game. So kids choose one of those and then they stay at that station Tuesday through Friday. They can make a new choice Monday. So that adds structure to the unstructured time but still gets kids outside. We're trying to gauge like bus ride-ups, see how it's going. Only have one so far. So we're hopeful. There could be several reasons why I only have one bus ride-up. There could be less ride-ups. There could be less instances. But for the most part, that seems to be going well. Our plan was to roll it out for a month and then check in and see how it was going.
Yeah. I think, though, like you were saying, you know, the challenge is there's after-school activities. You know, my kid doesn't get home now until 4:30, 4:45. Is there ever any idea of maybe 30s and 20s switch? Or how do we structure the ride home? Because my kid is, your kid has been stuck with this 30 late bus.
Do the bus routes.
Okay.
Central office.
It's a, no, First Student.
Yeah, First.
And our previous transportation director designs all routes. We don't.
Yeah.
Because it's so complicated with timing and number of kids on a bus. And I mean, that's something that was like, Trish used to spend months on.
Yeah.
But we don't have any say over that. I can answer that.
So I can answer. I took over transportation from the SAU this summer. On July 15th, our transportation coordinator quit. So we had no transportation coordinator. And that ad is still open as there is no one. We've had one suitable applicant for that position and would not take the position when we talked to them. We do have some ideas in the works. But we had to rely on First Student to go back and recalculate what our transportation coordinator would calculate all of our routes. The idea of changing routes and switching them has been an idea that we talked about last year. But with the transportation coordinator leaving, I do not have the capability to do that as the associate superintendent. Transportation is something I supervise, help alleviate problems. But to run bus routes is not in my wheelhouse, nor would it be something that I would have been able to pick up between July and our first day of school. So that is an option of switching because we do know that, you know, students that usually typically get on first, get off last. So they're riding the bus the longest. So that is something that we've already talked with First Student about. We can continue to look at it. But we had to get bus routes out. We fielded over 300 calls this year or emails of bus routes changes, not having kindergarten students being picked up at their houses. Why does our route go this way? And it does cascade since we're a double-tier run system that if the high school is late, it is going to impact either one of our elementary schools or the middle school. So if there's an incident on a bus, as soon as we get the information, we'll get it. And I believe if we can get the information out to parents to be able to get you here sooner, we would. We have a meeting again tomorrow with First Student to talk about it. We have been assured they have four drivers in the mix. However, your driver has to pass a state certification, both a driving test and also a written test. And if they fail either of those, you have two weeks that you have to wait before you can reapply to take it. And then it has to be processed at the state level. So we have four drivers that have gone through the certification. They're waiting on that process. Our goal is by November and then add another bus route to Stratum, which would alleviate bus 30, 31 on those timings. So we have a plan that we've thought about. We still have the drivers. We do not have the drivers. We are not at full capacity either at the middle school, high school, or Stratum. And some of our smaller elementary schools that only have one or two buses were not impacted because they only have one or two buses. So a lot of forethought going in there. And I do understand the impact as a parent in the district as well. You know, having our child ride a bus for a long time would not be something I'd want. So we're looking at it. I just, until we have a full capacity of bus drivers, we're stuck. And we're in the process where a much better spot than we were last year because we actually have four drivers who are looking to get certified. So we actually had two sub-bus drivers at the beginning of this year, two maternity leaves. I've already taken those two bus drivers out. So that's why we did not start with an additional bus ride because we would have had to recalculate at the beginning of the year. So we tried to troubleshoot as best we could from literally from July 16th until the opening of school, which was a very short duration of time of something that happens with a full-time person over the summer. So I appreciate the questions. I appreciate the different thinking. And we will continue to work on it. But until we get it full capacity, I think we've lowered times. But this is, our goal is to continue to do that. So we have that contract with First Student. It's got one more year. Looked to renegotiate. And one of the questions is how do we continue to build staffs or not in this dilemma? So that's a question that Molly and I will continue to ask when we renegotiate with First Student.
Yeah. It just seems like obviously there's a price point. First Student can hire bus drivers, right? So it just, it's, I completely sympathize. And I feel exactly, I mean, I'd been waiting at the bus stop for 10 minutes and the bus hadn't even left SMS yet. So yeah, it's frustrating. Do you think we could get an update next month? You said in your meeting.
Yep. I'd be glad to give an update of where we're at and talk about some ideas and put switches. I think the switch year to year would be really impactful for parents. You ride a bus for six years and you have to, you're at the front and you're at the end. I would like it to be more equitable so that can be definitely something that we continue to look at.
Yeah. I appreciate that comment. All right. So much. Okay. So we're going to pause public input right now. If there are additional people, please sign up. And we'll proceed on with the agenda. So it looks like right now, we're going to take a look at public minutes. Does anybody have any changes to the public minutes of June 13? Do they look okay, Paul? All right. Do I, I think, can we just do a motion for all of them?
There's, yes, you can. But some are going to have to change their motions because there were some absentees during our night of public.
Oh, understood. Okay.
So it might be best just to go through and vote on each one of them.
That's a great point. Okay. Do I have a motion for approval of the June 13 minutes?
Motion.
Thank you, Paul. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right. 4-0 with Eric absent. The non-public minutes, any changes to those?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Paul. Do I have a second?
All second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Looks like 4-0 with Eric gone. Take a look at the August 21st Board Retreat Public Minutes and Non-Public Minutes. Any changes to those? Seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve them?
I'm moved.
Thanks, Tanya. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Thanks, Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So it looks like 4-0 with Eric out. Finally, September 17 Public Minutes. I did have one question for Paul. On page 2. Paul's opinion was that he would ask the town to add to the maintenance fund $2,000 a year? I think you said 200.
200.
$200,000 a year.
I'd like to amend that. I'd like to amend that to 250.
Okay. 250. Well, can we change it if it wasn't said?
No.
Yeah.
It has to be the continued motion.
But I know you said 200.
Yeah, 200.
Okay. So let's make that amendment. Any other amendments? All right. Seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve as amended?
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Sophie. Second?
Second.
All right. Thanks, Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. 4-0-0.
Did we miss one? No.
I think that's it.
Do we have Board Retreat non-public?
Oh, I did amend one because it was all the same people.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Moving on to the superintendent report. Manifest and financials.
All right. So there's just a few manifests over there. So at the end of the year, we had to finish all of the paying of invoices. So there's a few dated 6:30 in that pile. And then getting ready for the school year, Kate and team did a lot of purchasing to get ready for the students. So that's why there's so many. And then there's the first five payrolls also there for you. So last year, we finished off, this is a record for me. So in June, we reported that the unassigned fund balance would be projected to be $507,056. That only changed by $598.
Oh, wow.
That is the closest that we've ever been in projecting. And so it was 507, $654. There, now, there were some ups and downs. So as we released purchase orders, we had some unexpected purchases come in. So those netted off against each other, less than $600. So that's a record. So I do have two forms for you to sign. One is called the DOE 25, and that goes to who it sounds like, the DOE. The other is the MS 25, and that goes to the Department of Revenue. So as a school board chair, Jennifer, just make sure you sign in the box here.
Okay.
And the one that says School Board Chair here. The rest of you can just sign on the lines. And they've already been signed by Esther.
Okay.
I can just pass those down. We don't...
Want me to sign on the line first?
Yeah, that's fine.
And so we don't typically bring a financial in the month of September because we're still learning about the students, building all the encumbrances, getting payrolls up and running. So when we meet next month in October, you'll have that first financial of the year. And then Kate and I have been working hard on her budget and for fiscal year '26 next year. And so then you'll get the first look at that in November.
Okay.
Okay? Did anyone have any questions?
Well done.
Thanks so much, Molly. PFOA project update.
Yeah, I sent you all the information. So we've been, our grant hasn't been initially approved, which is great. That's the $90,000. The last step is it needs to be approved by the Governor's Council. That meeting is on October 16th. So we should hear that week, final approval, then figure, then understand how the money is going to come to us so that we paid for, because we paid for that project ahead of time. But that covers all the testing and the change is over. So thank you for the hard work for the administrative team and Mr. Harrington. He's done a lot behind the scenes to get that going. And the amount of work to go into this grant, we thought it would be a lot easier than it was. But I'm glad we went through it because it's been fully funded, which is amazing. So hopefully, in our October, at least in our November meeting, I'll give you a confirmation that everything has been granted through.
All right. So you said Tim's already started working on it? And then when...
We're done. We're just waiting for the Governor's Council to approve it. Yep. We've got all the work, you know, the work with the architect. So we're good.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, I know I've gotten emails about it. So that's great news for everybody listening. All right. Board member's stipend requests.
Yep. There is a small stipend that's attached that always goes out to board members. You have the right to accept it or not. So I just put a form in front of you if you just want to give that back to me at the end of the night. That way, I know if you are going to accept that or if you're not going to accept that, which has happened in the past. But again, that's an individual decision. So that is in front of you.
And just a note to Tanya and Paul. I have this question. If we do not accept it, the money goes back to the school.
Correct. It's in our budget. Yep.
Does anybody have any questions or thoughts about that? Any discussion? Okay. Yeah.
And one other option that some people have also done is donate it. So like if you could donate it to students that can't afford to pay lunch. So instead of it going directly towards the bottom line of the fund balance, you could also donate it to the food service to offset students that can't afford to pay lunch.
How do we do that? Do we make a note on here or what?
Yep.
Thank you.
Question on that. Are there other areas other than like food service where students have needs that...
Like enrichment programs.
Yes. So at the end of the day, the Food Service Fund is always fully funded by the operating budget. But all bad debt, so bad debt, I hate the word bad debt. But it's students that can't afford to pay it. Then that has to be covered by the operating budget regardless. budget regardless. So even if your Food Service Fund finishes in a positive position, you don't have to give that money back in the tax rate. But all bad debt of students that couldn't afford to pay lunch does have to be covered by the operating budget.
Can I just add to that? So in my previous district where I worked, it was they would give it to like scholarships for field trips. They would give it to scholarships for enrichment programs. They would give it towards, we went to nature's classrooms, so our fourth, our fourth, fifth, and sixth graders went away for a week. And there were always kids that couldn't afford it. And so they would use that money. But what would happen is they would have to detail in their donation, I'm donating this money for this specific purpose, because that's what the auditing requires. And so you would say, I'm donating for A, B, or C, or A, and then we're allowed to use that money to offset those things.
Okay. Yeah, because the food service, like you're saying, if there's unpaid, it comes out of the operating budget. So if I donate it to the operating budget, it's kind of like?
Yeah. Or what Kate was referring to is what we call deferred revenue accounts. So those can carry over year to year. So if a student doesn't need it this year, then Kate can carry it forward in that deferred revenue account for future years if or when a student can't afford it.
Okay.
Question. We talked last time, I think, about continuing education for teachers. And it occurred to me that that was a struggle, paying for that. Did it be donated to that? Or did I misunderstand that?
Both of our collective bargaining agreements have money that is guaranteed the employees every year via their contract. And we always honor that because it is part of their collective bargaining agreement. And that includes professional learning for ESPs, teachers, special ed teachers, related services. So it's guaranteed by contract, and we budget it into our operating budget to cover it every year.
All right.
Any other questions or thoughts? All right. Title IX update.
Yeah, so with the federal changes in Title IX, we're still waiting for policy change, but just wanted to give the board an update of where we're at. So just going to read a quick message from Ellen Risco, who's our Title IX coordinator for the district. And this is what we're giving to all of our boards. And then we will bring a policy as change is coming. We didn't want to make suggested changes until we had the policy committee look at that. So at this time, all SAU schools are adhering to the 2024 Title IV regulations that went in effect on August 1, 2024. We've adjusted our sexual harassment process and protocols accordingly. The policy committee will be reviewing the updated draft policy of ACAC at the October meeting, and it will go before each individual board after that has been approved at that level. So you will be seeing it probably in November meeting, what those changes are, both at the federal and state levels.
Okay. All right, moving ahead to board reports and committees. Building Committee, Paul and Sophie.
I'm up, right? I'm pleased to report that with the efforts of Assistant Superintendent Andruski and Attorney Goro and the subcommittee, the building subcommittee, we have agreed on an RFP, and it has been posted. So it's out there. So it's two-week process, two-week wait. And we anticipate, you know, we're waiting for respondents to that.
Okay.
So that's a big step forward. And subsequently, we've got, we've identified four individuals from the subcommittee who are experienced in construction, the commercial construction industry. Then they'll interview the respondents and select two to come to the board for a final decision. That's who we stand. So waiting two weeks.
Okay. And you were saying that members of the building committee maybe know people, and so like they're reaching out?
Yeah, that's true. And I saw Chris has done that with the town of Guilford. And you're in the process of doing that. And a couple of the subcommittee members have responded to me saying, yep, we've got, we know a bunch of people we're going to, we're going to talk to. So I'm very excited about it. I think we're going to, you know, and they're telling me, you know, the industry is actually quite soft, and they think that people are going to get aggressive. And I was mentioning this to Sophie, I think this school is going to get a real, really good value for its tax dollar in what's coming up. So I'm very excited about it.
That's great. Sophie, anything to add?
No, just want to thank Paul for his time and effort, and the subcommittee.
Yeah, my biggest problem was trying to figure out how to forward and respond using the Google Mail system, the SAU Google. I find it incredibly confusing, but I muscled through it.
Yeah, definitely. Thanks to Chris.
Chris.
Sophie. Yeah. That is a lot of work, and I look forward to seeing it. We will, we do have 19 more minutes of public comment. So after the board reports, we'll open it up to public comment if anybody has commented. So Eric had policy committee, but he is out today. Does any, you don't have any out?
No, we just had our last meeting, Eric brought up that he'd like to talk about cell phone use. So I put it on here as a placeholder so that we can carry it over to October, something that's not on the policy committee agenda, but any board can look at their own policies. So I just wanted to hold that as a placeholder to honor his comments.
Yeah. Sounds good. I didn't know if you, did you know that we were doing that? Oh, we're looking at cell phone policies. Just going to look. Okay. Superintendent, Evaluation Committee is me. So we're just, we met two weeks ago, and then we've met a few times, and then a bunch of emails. But we were looking at the evaluation criteria for the superintendent. Esther then wrote up what she, kind of her edits to it. Then we said we wanted it to be more sort of quantitative instead of just qualitative, and what could we use? And you guys might remember, we did a communication survey. And, you know, we really like created a whole dashboard for that data. So we wanted to kind of look at that. And so we just built that back in. Esther looked at it one more time. And now we'll meet again in, in two weeks, I think, to kind of finalize everything with that. Any questions about that? All right. Tanya, Safety and Security Task Force?
Yeah. So Safety and Security Task Force, the first meeting is actually October 17th. So nothing to report here, but no report after that meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Sophie, Communication?
Yeah, nothing really to report. I'll continue doing the summaries after this. I'll wait for the minutes from Sharon, send it out to you as I did last year, and then put it out to the community. And then as we move forward with the building committee, I'm going to come up with kind of a communication proposal for us to discuss with the building committee's approval for how to communicate the building renovation, and then, you know, leading up to the ballot vote, what that looks like.
Yeah, you know, I was thinking about that and wanted to talk to you a little bit about that. So the way I see it going is, we get the respondents, we down-select, we choose a pre-construction manager. He comes through the building, confirms, or dispels, or changes our limited scope, and gets bids for that which we agree on. And once those are in, now we have, like, you know, we've got everything written in stone. And then we go, you know, pedal to the metal on communications outreach.
Yep.
Because there'll be no, well, we're thinking about, we're waiting for, we'll have everything. Does that sound?
Yeah. We just, I just need the date, you know, and then start to think and vote out, like, do we want to have a meeting, you know, in the town hall? Do we want to, you know, or a presentation?
Right, right.
Do we want to have a presentation in different areas?
I think a presentation's a good idea, because we'll have everything. We'll have all the facts. Yeah.
Yep. So we want to have kind of an, yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
I did include for you two, a calendar. So one of the events Paul asked for was, what's the date that we have to, because we have to have a special bond hearing if we do get a bond number that we're going to present in March. So that, the last date to hold a public bond, hearing on a bond is Monday, February 24. So that's the date we have to work back from. So the public has to come in and talk about that. So I gave you all the dates that we're required to follow. We have to post it by February, Monday, February 17. We can have a meeting in between the 17th and the 24th. That, those are the dates that we really have to work by. So you can see what we're, how the process has to work backwards before our annual meeting.
So we really should be, we should really be looking at, the hard date is the 17th, is that right?
For us, just to post, we can have a meeting right after that, but we have to make sure. So once we get to a point, and I think we have to have some community forums before that, then you have a bond hearing to know the number, and then the community can ask questions about the number, and how do we get there. It's required. And then, then we can bring it to the annual meeting in March. Yeah.
Do you think about adding to the committee?
No, no, I'm not thinking about adding to the committee. We have, I think we have an exceptional committee right now. I'm very, very happy with it.
I agree. Yeah. I'm just thinking about maybe people that did the CMS project, or Selectmen, or you know what I mean? Are there people that, because it seems like you have construction people, but are there people that are more, maybe can do outreach to different towns people?
We can loop them in with communication. They don't necessarily need to be on the committee.
Right. Outreach is a different question. I don't have a problem with that. You know, when it comes time to do the outreach, the more, the merrier. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Sounds great. Chair update. I think, I don't really have anything. Normally, I just report on what emails I've gotten that month. So I did receive some emails about some developments going in around town, and how those affect the school, and then also how are, are those kind of things communicated between the town and the school, and the developers, and how do those kind of things affect the school? And then I also got some emails about the, you know, the PFAS and the PFOAs. And those were pretty much my emails this month. All right. I will, once again, open public comment if anybody has anything they would like to add.
Nikki Hutchins, 22 Doveron Lane. That was actually one of the things that I wanted to talk about, was the water. I feel like, well, I feel like there's a lack of communication anyways, that we get like a lot of information about certain things, but other things are kind of like, I don't know. But the water is, I was really curious about, because I haven't heard back from it since the last school board meeting that I got to attend. And it was a huge deal back then, and they were two to three weeks in, and I didn't know where that stood. Did we ever put the system through? Are we still waiting for the system? Is the water safe to drink?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Chris can give you a little update.
Yeah, I might ask Kate, and then she's in better communications with Tim every day. But we've been working through to get the water system for all of the school up to date. Any water in here?
The two bubblers, I knew.
They've all have filtration systems on them, so they've been being filtered.
Okay, so now everything has a filtration system on it?
Inside this building, the water, any place that our students are getting water is fully infiltrated. It's not being affected by your PFOAs. The PFOAs that's in our other water is going to be washed out, and that is the grant that we got to be able to continue to work on that. So it's being addressed, but the inside of the building is not an issue.
So it's still, okay.
It's the outside, and that is what we're working on with that full grant.
Okay. That was the part I guess I was confused on then. All right, fine. Awesome. Well, that's good news then, because it was scaring the crap out of me with the kids. But, okay, so my next topic was about the BESS testing, which I'm not big into anyways, because I'm really, I don't love the whole SEL thing to begin with. But, so Behavioral Emotional Screening System. I just feel like that should require parents' approval first. I don't like that I have to ask them to be opted out. I think that I should have to sign off that they go through with it. I just, I don't love any of that. And I feel like the school should be teaching math, science, English, and I'll deal with all the SEL stuff at home personally. But, but I'm not really an advocate of the whole Zen Den thing or anything like that anyways. So.
Okay.
And the sunroom. I don't feel like most, most people know about the sunroom, by the way, and that also scares me. But anyways, and then I was, an old topic from February of last year, the food policy. I know that that went through, and now there's no food for any of the kids, like potties that they have, or anything like that, or like Valentine's Exchanges, things like that. And I just, I get it that we were saying it's about allergies and things like that. But if you're in a room, if your classroom is a room where there's no allergy kids, then why are those kids being punished? Or why can't we just make sure we know about the allergies? Because I mean, all of the daycares and preschools that I went to with the, both of my boys, it was all nut-free everything. I mean, they were soy-free, nut-free, you name it. And you just had to be really diligent about it, and there was nothing homemade. It was all, you had to bring it in with the packaging, and it had to be very explicit. I didn't understand why maybe we couldn't look into something like that, because I just feel like the kids, my kids grew up through this whole COVID thing, and I think that they lose out on a lot of stuff as it is. And I don't like them losing out on celebrations.
Yeah. Thank you.
So.
Yes.
And that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming to the meeting.
Hi, Rachel Jefferson, 85 Field Lane. I just wanted to speak real briefly. Everyone I know got my email about personal devices. I appreciate that the board's really like making an effort to support the school with making a policy. So that way, when parents fight back on, you know, whether the kids have watches or phones, it used to be that middle school kids would get phones, and now, then it was fifth grade, now it's third grade. And I know people that are giving their kindergarteners watches. And so I just really hope the board makes a strong policy to really push back on, on that, because it's a distraction for not just the kid that has the device, but all the kids around it, for the teachers. And I also wanted to, you know, that we have obviously an increase in screen use at schools. I real hope that, I don't know if this is like a board thing, but that we try to maybe limit it at the lower grade levels, and also not support after-school activities, like Maker Space, where they're really just going and playing Minecraft after school all day. It used to be like they would have hand, hands-on projects, and that kind of fell to the wayside. So I'm just hopeful that the school will really work towards getting on this trend of trying to like pull back on the screens a little bit with the kids. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Rachel, former board member. The board is, we're reviewing our goals, is the next item on the agenda. So that is one of the elements of our board goals.
Thanks. Greg Richardson, 6, Pointe Rocks Terrace. I second what Rachel said about devices. My kids are little, but I can already see it permeating in second grade, not in home, not at school, but otherwise. Question about the buildings. So two things about the RFP. I listened to the last building committee, and I think you guys have done an amazing job. Two questions, though. Is the RFP posted somewhere in public? Because like the whole town can see, and is that advertised? Because you may get better buy-in if people, everyone feels like they have a say in potentially getting candidates. I know someone in particular that I would actually share it with. And the second is, inside of the RFP, I know there's some prioritization, like HVAC's a bigger issue than, you know, some of the other factors. Is the RFP set up in a way that it's segmented out like that? Or is it for the whole piece, and it just gets whittled down? And you might have already said that, but I don't, I don't, didn't register with me.
So the RFP is on the SMS website. It's on the SAU 16, right? Okay. So the RFP was, was written and generated between the subcommittee and our attorney. I know, I'm trying to think about it. It talks a lot about what's expected of the pre-construction manager. But the pre-construction manager is coming in to help us define the scope. We have a general scope. So it doesn't say, oh, come on in and help us with the HVAC.
Right, right. So it's still.
Yeah. He's going to come in and tell us what the school needs. We have a very good idea from, you know, years of working with the previous architect. But, so it's, it's kind of like that, right? Does that answer your question?
It does. I understand. So I just noticed the candidate was asking a question.
But by all means, if you know someone who's in the industry, works as a pre-development or pre-construction manager, please tell him, or her, or them that the RFP exists. They can find it on the website. Yeah, great.
All right.
Excuse me, one more thing. The RFP, I think, responds to you, Chris. Is that right?
Yeah, everyone sends it in to me, and then I bring it to the subcommittee. Yeah.
All right. Any other public comment? Okay, we're going to leave it open for 11 more minutes. And so welcome. Any thoughts? Okay, moving ahead, we're going to look at, oh, I guess I misspoke. First, we have SMS administrative report.
I don't know if you guys have any questions on what we had put in your board packet. I'm happy to answer them.
Does anybody have any thoughts or concerns? I did have one. Are you going to talk separately about the handbook?
The handbook should have been emailed to you.
Yeah. So I did just have a question about the handbook, in that you talk about student-led conferences. And then I know you guys did a survey last spring. So just wondering, like, what was the feedback from the survey? And have there been any maybe changes to the student-led conferences?
I'm glad you asked. We had 11 respondents.
Oh, gosh.
Eleven.
Really?
That said, we, we have several SMS staff that are like liaisons to the PTO, and meet with the PTO. And so they had a great conversation.
Okay.
So what we'll be doing this year is, student-led conferences are intended to be about four kids at one time, and you do them for about 30 minutes. So what we'll be doing is we'll do, say, 8 o'clock to 8:30. Obviously, that's not the exact time. There'll be four students going. Then we will stop and break, and any family that wants to then sign up for just a caregiver, parent conference with a teacher can also do that, so that they'll have an opportunity for both. We didn't want to
Okay.
forego the benefits of a student-led conference for the student, because there's so many valuable skills developed during that time. But we also wanted to offer families the opportunity, who did have some, wanted to have a time to talk about specific questions.
Yeah.
And so we're combining both.
Okay.
Some grade levels are offering like a drop-in Zoom meeting. I know the K team's giving like, here's a couple of hours that we're open. You can go home and have a meeting. That way you're not going back and forth, back and forth, because you have that individual time.
Okay. Yeah, I like the idea of both being offered, because I think a lot of families don't want to bug the teacher more than they're already, you know, they have all this work to do. So I like the idea that it's just offered, right, that the parent doesn't have to request.
Yeah.
That's one-on-one. Okay. Any other thoughts on the handbook or the administrative report?
I think so far, I've heard great things about the start of year. It's been, I just came from the cross-country meet, like the happiest place on earth. And, yeah, it's been, I've heard great things. So, I don't know.
It's been an awesome start.
Has it? Okay.
It's the best start since I can remember, probably now that COVID's passed, routines are in place.
Okay.
Like it, September's been.
Good. Yeah. And Perry's been around a lot.
Perry's been around every day.
Uh huh.
She's getting old.
The other day, I was passionate about something, and the next thing I know, Perry's at my feet. I'm like, oh, yes, my energy is emitting from my body.
She's walking over, sat right at her, like, I'm here.
Legitimately. I was like, oh, boy. Thankfully, it was just a dog.
Reporting for duty. Yeah. Okay, good. All right, awesome.
She was all over you.
She was. She was like, don't get a lick of your face, Kate.
She was like, that energy, I'm coming over. This dude this week called her, her calming dog.
Yeah.
Very upset. And she kept saying, this is my calming dog.
Did Perry recently get a haircut?
Oh, don't know.
I heard.
Put this in the minute. So Perry
Yeah, put this in the minute.
Sadly shaven, like last day of school, and to the point that when my husband got home, he was in the car. I'm like, are you coming out? He's like, I'm scared to bring her out. And she was like a naked mole rat, very, very. This has been growing out for three months.
Okay.
So the way she looks now, it become a long.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. She thinks she looks great.
Yeah.
We're just rolling. The first graders are like, ew.
True. They didn't recognize her.
They all thought it was a new dog.
Well, we're glad to have Perry with us.
Yep.
Okay. All right. I think our final item on the agenda is the board goals, which are on the Google Drive.
I promised myself I wouldn't interject, and I would let you guys talk. But there's just, I wanted to hand out the assessment schedule. It was one of the things that was on the agenda for you guys to see.
Okay.
And I just want to make sure I'm handing it to you guys, so you have it.
Thank you. And actually, that reminds me, I wanted to say, when, when you were speaking, I'm not sure if you're aware, but on our web, on the SMS website, if you go to the school board, there's a list of topics that we talk about every month. So one month, we'll talk about food services. One month, we'll talk about SEL services and what they are. So it's a great opportunity to really kind of deep dive. You know, obviously, you brought up quite a few points. It's hard in a meeting like this to like really dive into all of those points. But those individual meetings are pretty awesome to hear what's going on and ask a lot of questions. Okay. Including assessments will be one of the months.
So what you have in front of you is the benchmarking schedule. So that's done three times a year. It's part of the multi-tiered system of supports. It's a essential component. And so it's laid out for you in terms of preschool through fifth grade, what is assessed in terms of literacy, math, occupational therapy, speech, and SEL, and then the specific assessments that are given. And then on the very final page is just the SAS dates.
Yeah. Do any board members have any questions about these assessments? Yeah. I mean, I was saying before the meeting, you know, I know the board is always asking for data, right? And we want data, and we want to evaluate that the kids are doing great. But these all represent, right, kids that are taking these tests, and, you know, teachers that are dealing with anxiety and stress. And, you know, I definitely recognize that. So anyway, thank you. Okay. Without further ado, unless anybody has anything else, let's talk about the board goals. Just so everybody knows, we got together in August and came up with, it looks like, I think we have six goals, and did a little bit of editing, looking at academics, communication and engagement, fiscal stewardship, student wellness, technology, and faculty recognition, staff and, and teacher recognition. And these board goals were sort of inform our decisions for the next year. And so, anyway, does anybody have any questions or concerns about these board goals? And if you have small edits, or, you know, if you have edits, I'm happy to, to take them, and, and we can finalize them. Anybody have concerns or?
Is it the draft one? It's not the draft?
Yeah.
Sorry, I haven't pulled this up.
That's okay. Just a reminder to do the second part of four to shadow or volunteer as much as we can. For those of us especially who don't have kids, three of us don't have kids at SMS right now. So.
Yes.
I think Jennifer has like a permanent seat in the school. She's been here so often, which is a great thing, a wonderful thing.
Yeah. All right. Well, take a look at them when you're not sitting in front of a, you know, a room of people. And if you have edits, send them to me. Otherwise, we'll send these and, and put them in our agendas. Great.
Just need to make a motion if you want to approve these as your goals.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion, I guess, I'll make a motion to approve pending any edits you might give me in the next three weeks.
Second.
Okay. Thank you.
We're voting?
Yeah, we'll vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All opposed? All right, 4-0-0. All right. I know, Chris, you had sent out a few supplemental emails. Anything we're missing?
Nope. Just in there, I just wanted to show you the support staff categories, which had been updated from last year. Part of policy, we just update that and look at that. So I just want you to have what had been transcribed out of our budget last year, and just get a approval of those to bring back to Ms. Murr. just get a approval of those to bring back to Ms. Murray in HR. I believe that's all. And then I will have just one non-public item to go into.
Okay. All right. All right, we just have a minute and 15 seconds. I have a question.
More manifest?
Yes, more manifest. Yes.
I have a question for new business. Has anyone, okay, Mariam Levy, I think some of you know her. She's a good friend of mine. I was wondering if SMS has ever looked into using her services? If so, what that conversation is and.
No, we haven't used her. So that, so we have not used her for our work.